Well, good evening, everyone. I ask that you would please rise as we welcome Pastor Kevin Batch to lead us in the invocation followed up by the Pledge of
Shall we pray? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings that have come to us because of you and your gracious outpouring upon our lives. Father God, we pray for this meeting tonight in our city and we ask for your wisdom to be present, that you would bless our council members with guidance as they deliberate on items before them tonight. We pray that you would endow them with your truths and humble service that would bless our township, our community, our people, and that every decision would be righteous in your sight and for your benefit and for our glory. In the name of the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It is 5:30 PM. And I will call on June 17th, I will call this meeting, the Fergus Falls City Council, to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. At this time, we will open the floor for the open forum. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to the council on any item that is not on the agenda is welcome to do so at this time. Please step to the lectern and state your name.
My name is Maury Foss. I've lived the last 25 years in Otter Tail County and the last nine here in Fergus Falls. To stay on point, I just wanted to jot some things down here. The city of Fergus Falls has a history of grand trees canaping the streets and landscape gardens throughout the city. About three weeks ago, I enjoyed a class reunion that brought back to Fergus classmates from all across America and even from Norway. One classmate said, "What happened to the beautiful town that I remember years ago? Tall grass and dandelions, two feet tall everywhere." I said our city council voted to recommend no mow in May. The catchy title was coined in a well-meaning organization in the United Kingdom in 2019 to encourage people to pause mowing during the month of May so flowers in the lawn could bloom, providing early-season pollen and nectar for the bees and other pollinating insects. And in 2020, the residents of Appleton, Wisconsin, heard about the British program and convinced their city council to encourage people to stop mowing for the month of May. For the past four years, "no mow May" has become a popular buzzword. In theory, not mowing the lawn for the entire month of May would allow plants to flourish and blooms without being cut off. These flowers would provide nourishment for bees early in the growing season. And most of our fruit and vegetable production does depend on a healthy bee population. Many communities adapted the practice as well. For the sake of our discussion, what if we didn't mow our lawns in May? What type of flowers would grow and bloom? However, if I stopped mowing in May, the prevalent flower would be dandelions, and that's true for most lawns in the upper Midwest. Most of our lawns do not have a meadow of wildflowers waiting to be unleashed. They have dandelions waiting to proliferate, and that's what "no mow May" unleashes. Now, bee research has shown that pollen from dandelions isn't overly nutritious for pollinating bees and it lacks important amino acids for their health. There are better food sources that we can provide and promote. Failure in mow to not mow in May will cause an even greater escalation in the dandelions with the fluffy seeds spreading far and wide. Now, would your neighbor appreciate your fluffy seeds blowing onto their well-kept landscape? I believe a strained neighbor relationship would occur. Dandelions quickly get into where they're not wanted, such as perennial flower beds choking out flower types that provide better nutrition. John Trappy, who is the turf grass extension educator with the University of Minnesota, said, "We currently don't know if there is a benefit to pollinators by not mowing in May." And Don Kinsler, Extension Agent in Agriculture and Horticulture, who you may be heard of from North Dakota State University, has also questioned. Attempting to mow 15 inches of grass in early June isn't easy or healthy for our lawns. Turf research has shown that removing more than one-third of a grass's blade at one time shocks the grass plants. This causes stress to a lawn before the hot summer can diminish its health for the rest of the growing season. Repeating "no mow May" for consecutive years will cause thinning and weakening of the turf grass. North Dakota State University, University of Minnesota, and many other research universities have expressed the dangers of "no mow May." Now, helping our pollinating bees and insects is vital, that there is a better way, though, than letting our lawn suffer. Plant perennial flower gardens that include spring blooming types rich in nectar and pollen, including native wildflowers. Plant spring flowering trees and shrubs. Your landscape becomes more beautiful and the bees will be happy. My hope is that you, as the Fergus Falls Council, will reconsider implementing another "no mow May" in the future. We have a short growing season in Minnesota whereby we can observe and enjoy the wonders of landscapes and nature. Thank you for hearing my concern on the topic of "no mow May."
Thank you, Maury. Thank you. I've heard from a number of people that have similar sentiments, and I believe it's a consensus that "no mow May" maybe no mow. Anyone else would like to speak to the council this? Thank you, Maury. Yeah, please.
More of a reminder, it seems, and I mentioned it to Mr. Fish.
Kathy, would you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Kathy Sieg. When we elect you and you come here, it seems like we are forgotten and you all discuss what you each feel is the right thing. And you decide amongst yourselves what to do. You are here as our representatives. That's what, you come to us to vote and you represent us. We find out about things after they're done and then when we find out about it and object, it's too late. So I suggest a reminder that your description is you are a representative of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing no one, we will move along. To the approval of the agenda, I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented.
Good evening, Your Honor, members. I am not aware of any changes this evening, so it could be approved as presented.
Thank you. I would look for a motion.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anthony, someone like to second? Jim, thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Next, we look for a resolution appointing. We have a motion from the work session for Mike Mortensen to be recommended to fill the vacant council position in the third ward. I would look for a resolution to that effect. If someone would like to offer that? Councilmember Kramer, thank you. Laura, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
That resolution fails to get five votes, I believe. Is that correct? Is it four to three?
Four to three.
Four to three. Okay, so that resolution fails. We would look, then, I guess, at an upcoming meeting to staff direction if we continue to fill this seat or if we wait until the November 5th election to fill this seat. At that time, we'll look for further direction at the next meeting of the council and ask for staff to bring possibilities of ways to continue as the charter tells us to do, or do we just leave it to the November 5th election? But I would like to say thank you, Mr. Mortensen. Thank you, Mr. Cooney, for being here this evening.
I would like to make a motion that we I'd like to make a motion that we refer the vacancy section of, back to the Charter Commission, to look at that and come up with some solutions so that, you know, equally in adding to that discussion, if it's within a certain timeframe of a general election, that, you know, the seat would remain vacant until that point so that the general public has, you know, the ability to weigh in and do what they do best.
There's a motion. Someone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Scott? Any questions on Anthony's motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Both same sign. That motion carries. Scott?
I'd like to also offer a motion. In light of that, I think it's a good idea to have the Charter Commission looking at this, and yet I believe that'll take some time. And by the time they come back with any recommendation and we have a chance to do anything about it, we'll be well into the fall. And I think that it's upon us to try and fill this as soon as possible and to give the folks in Ward Three full representation. And to that end, I would make a motion that we reopen the application process. Perhaps we'll get another or additional candidates. Maybe one of these guys will decide it's not worth the bother and drop out, whatever. But in any case, if we reopen it and have, say, for example, our July 15th meeting be a next round of appointment where we would attempt to appoint a candidate at our July 15th meeting.
That's a motion, Scott?
Let me try and put that a little shorter. I'd like to make a motion that we reopen the application process with the intent to appoint a candidate at our July 15th meeting.
Thank you. Someone like to second that motion? With that, appears that there's not a second, so that motion dies for the lack of a second. Under public hearings this evening, we have City Project 5961, Junius Avenue Reconstruction Project preliminary cost hearing. And I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you and good evening, Your Honor, and council members. Yes, just want to go over some background information. This is for City Public Improvement 5961. This is the 2024 Street and Utility Reconstruction Project of Junius Avenue with limits from showing up on the screen from Union to Cascade Street. Today's the hearing day. I'll be asking you to open it up. Special assessment notices have been handed up, sent to benefiting properties. To date, I have not received any objections prior to this hearing. I'm going to be requesting you open it up. Interest rate on the assessments is not to exceed 7% with a term of 15 years. We've estimated the special assessment rates at $85 per lineal foot for commercial. There is one residential property and propose a 25% reduction, so $63.75. So the cost breakdown in your memo is showing special assess 10-ton street design, which will be active if we make it to the final hearing of $133,203.50. There's a special assess for city property that amounts to $28,262.50. There's also some other miscellaneous street costs as well in an amount of $55,284. And then our share, because we're only assessing a portion of the streets, so the remaining portion and 10 tons design is city costs, and that amounts to $661,700. So a total of a two-mid street share is $878,450. We also have the sanitary sewer, water main services, sanitary $320,000, water main about $455,500. And lastly, some storm sewer estimated at $220,000. So we're estimating a total project cost of $1,872,389. To go over the financing, mentioned we're going to try to issue PR 429 bonds for the active street assessments. We also will be using the sanitary sewer fund, waterfront, and storm fund to fully fund this project. I just want to note, with the special assessed rate, we do not meet the 20% threshold to issue 429 bonds. We're about 18.4%. However, we did put in advertisement that we will be doing a bond issuance with a previous project, Shoreview Drive, that will get us definitely over that 20% threshold. So at this time, I'm just going to be requesting you open up the public improvement hearing for Public Improvement 5961.
Thank you, Brian. And this time, I will do that. The public hearing for Project, City Project 5961, Junius Avenue Reconstruction is open. If anyone would like to speak to that project, please step to the lectern. State your name. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and it is back to the council. We would look for a resolution ordering the project plans and specifications for Project 5961.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thanks, Anthony.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Questions for Brian? Yeah, Scott?
Just one question, Brian. This isn't a big deal probably, but just so that people understand, the road between the courthouse and the police station and that strip through there, that's going to get wider as a result of this construction, or is it going to remain the same as it is?
Correct, yes. That portion that you're referring to right there, I believe at the preliminary report, we were estimating about four feet to the north. We're trying to balance with the tree removals and everything, so.
It's pretty narrow as it is.
Correct. That'll help, it'll meet the state aid design standards and facilitate better parking.
And then, these assessments are a different ballgame than property taxes, and in this case, the courthouse, the two churches that are involved, they each get to pay their share as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions? Scott?
Mine's for Bill. Hey, Bill, budgetary, budget, where's this going to come from? We haven't talked about it yet, so.
Yep. I'll step up so I can look at all of you. See, under that section where Brian has the financing and you have the 429 bonds, so 429 is Minnesota statute 429 that we have authorization to issue bonds for, and that's why we have the hearing tonight and combining that with the Shoreview project. So the active assess portion to the other properties that are not the city is the $133,203. That will come in from Otter Tail County, from the other, the churches like Brian mentioned, and then the other property owners along there. The city is also assessed for our portion, which is along the liquor store frontage, has a little bit there, the police station, and the parking lot, right? So the city will need to cover that. That'll come out of property tax levy combined with the other section that says city share. That's also then, this, you know, the city will contribute property taxes to pay those bonds for that. And when I looked at an estimate of that, just on this project here, a levy maybe of around $53,000 a year is what that would come to be for that, supporting the $537,540 city portion between assessments and city share. Yeah, Brian has in his memo the municipal state aid for streets contribution of $215,000. And then those enterprise funds, we've talked about that in the past where we do our utility rate studies each year. We build in improvements within those so that we're covering that. Look at pay cash from those funds to cover those portions. Now, the more projects we do, we'll have to see, is there a time we would bond for some water or storm water improvements, for example, that may come, but cash should be able to fund those parts. But there would be a levy required for that city share. Again, when you issue bonds to construct the project, and then when you pay those off, you receive the special assessments in and then levy a property tax each year, and those two sources then pay that, those debt service payments.
Thank you. I just wanted to explain, and the reason I ask is because we were planning on using the franchise fees for this project. I believe it was in our tax, we were talking about it, and that was just one of the projects was going to go towards that. So I just wanted to kind of make sure we understood the transparency of what's happening, so.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions for either Bill or Brian? There's a resolution ordering the project's plans and specifications. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under awarding of bids, tonight we have two bids to award. First is a contract for Public Improvement 5377, the 2024 Mill and Overlay Project to Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $245,514.80. And we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, and on Tuesday, May 28th, we opened up sealed bids and publicly allowed for this project. We received a total of four bids at the time of the opening. Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving out of Alexandria was a apparent low with a total base bid amount of $245,514.80. The engineer's assessment was, at the time, $277,800. I've included the bid tabulation for additional reference. We've tabulated the bids and conducted a post-bid interview and determined Mark Lee's bid is in all in order. So the total estimated project cost, I have the table there with the base contract. I'm also requesting an increase in contract as well. That's showing up there, $61,300. I do have some budget for contingencies, engineering design, and some soft costs. So we're estimating a total estimated project cost of $361,164.80. And I just want to show you, I just want to refer to the base bid drawing right there. Those are the streets showing in yellow. That is part of the base contract. There was an alternate bid of Channing Avenue and noted there in a white blockout. However, in discussion with some public works staff, I'm requesting not to approve that alternate, and I want to put some funds to a different project that we're going to be looking at, and that's on Pebble Shores Drive as well. I'd like to do an overlay where we do some patching and everything, but we just feel that room probably has more needs right now at this time. So if there's any question, just want to go over the budgetary. We have annual levied amount of $324,400. And to fully fund this, I want requesting you some municipal state aid and maintenance dollars to fully fund this project, So at this time, I'm, yes, requesting a resolution to award the construction contract base bid to Mark Lee Asphalt in an amount of $245,514.80. And then also authorization to add Pebble Shores Drive to this contract as well. So I'll open up any questions you have.
Thank you, Brian. We can do that through a resolution? Thank you. Jim? Thank you. Scott? Questions for Brian? Yeah, go ahead, Scott. Oh, is that just a second? Do you have a question? I thought you had a question, too.
Just for what it's worth, Ben, sometimes when you say Scott, I see Lynn looking, "Which Scott was it?" And so I was just trying to tell her that that was me.
We'll make sure if you had any questions. All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Second resolution is awarding the contract for the 2024, 2025 mowing services to Atlas Outdoor Services. We'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, each, every two years, we go up for bids for a contractor to do mowing services for the city for properties that are out of compliance with the city code. So we advertised in early April, received no bids, re-advertised in May, received four bids. And the bid that we're recommending you to approve tonight is to Atlas Outdoor Services. Their price for their services, $55 per hour for a commercial mower, $75 an hour for a hill mower, and $45 an hour for incidental use trimmers and leaf blowers. All these costs get passed on to the property owner. If they go unpaid after being invoiced, then they are certified to the property's taxes.
Thank you. Guy, we can do that through a resolution as well?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, please, go ahead, Jim.
Is this for "no mow May"?
The contractor has been busy the last couple of weeks, clearing that up, cleaning it up. Just to that point, we have sent out 71 letters since the first of June to properties that are out of compliance, as opposed to about 20 last year, which last spring was, it was late, and then we didn't get the moisture we are this year.
And I have a question. Obviously, we send out a letter, but how long is that between kind of like the letter or the contact with the owner before we then kind of take action and then actually physically mow the grass?
Yeah, it's different. If we make a personal contact, then we'll do it within three days. If it's a letter, then it's seven. And then the contractor then has three days beyond that.
To go and get it done?
Get it done.
Macro, 10, maximum 10 days.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, we have two items under petitions and communications. The first is a resolution acknowledging the retirement and 23 years of service to the city of Fergus Falls from Randy Reamer, and I will read that resolution. Whereas Randy Reamer has submitted her intent to retire effective June 28th, 2024. Whereas Randy has served, I'm sorry, whereas Randy was hired as a utility receptionist on June 20th, 2001, and whereas on November 19th, 2018, her title became Customer Service Payment Coordinator, a position she has held until the present time. And now therefore be it resolved by the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept the resignation of Randy Reamer and thank her for her 23 years of dedicated service as an employee to the city of Fergus Falls. The above and foregoing resolution was offered at a regular council meeting by Councilmember Jim Fish. It was seconded by Councilmember Tom Ruffer, and it was adopted by the following vote. Roll call.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Randy's not here tonight, but I would like to say thank you for the 23 years of service to the city of Fergus Falls. And next, we'll look to Representative Jeff Backer, who's with us this evening to give us a legislative update from the Capitol, and then also specifically, Jeff and I were talking, Representative, we're talking about the project on Lake Alice that he was instrumental in securing for the city. So welcome, Jeff, and looking forward to having you here this evening.
Thank you, members. Couple of things I want to talk about tonight is about EMS and also the Lake Alice project. I took some notes. Also like to talk about your landfill. And then two issues that helped the city of Fergus and actually every community by not passing. So I'm going to start with those. The hardcore legislators from Minneapolis and St. Paul was really pushing a zoning issue that would take a lot of local control away from y'all. What it did was it would allow multiple family units to be built on single-family dwellings, you know, lots. Okay, so we're talking about multiple, quite a few multiples. And then there would not have to be any parking for those. Of course, in Minneapolis-St. Paul, this is something that is very big. Some of the suburbs areas, they want a more dense population. I won't go into the political challenges that provide, but the main thing about this zoning issue, one of the few things that you guys have pretty much a lot of control over is how your land is used. And what this would do is set a, really, a statewide zoning requirement. Now, the good news, it failed. That's good, good news. The bad news, and I'm not making this political, but the fact is, is right now, both chambers are controlled by the metro folks. So if the House stays in metro control, we'll say the word Democrats, okay? Then you're going to see this keep coming up because that's something that's very important to them. I want local control. My caucus wants local control. And I've been out door knocking, and I've heard also people who do not agree with my political views all the time agree that we need to get some balance down in St. Paul and have more safe for greater Minnesota. This is a very good example. So this will come back. It will come back most likely on the Senate side and from the administration. The House changes to a different party so we can get some balance down in the Capitol. can get some balance down in the Capitol, really greater Minnesota compared to the metro, we will, this is not something that we would be interested in. So that's good news. Also, what stopped, and this was because the bonding bill did not stop, but Representative Fu, who is the chair of the bonding issue, wanted a new requirement this year. So let's say you guys come out and you want $10 million for a new water treatment plant, or something like that, or some bonding that you have, okay? Well, for you to get that bonding money, you have to agree that you would take every year from your budget and set money aside so 30, 40 years from now, when that project is done, the state would not have to provide funding. Now, I'm not saying it's not a bad idea to put money in for capital improvement. When I was Mayor of Browns Valley, we would do it for police, fire, ambulance, to replace our rigs, to replace fire. That makes sense. But there is a vested interest from the state to help with water treatment plants, to help like with streets and roads, especially the sewer and water. So there, that it's, there were so many strings tied to it. Again, the state taking local control from what you guys decide on projects, that also failed, and that's something. If you all want to do that, if you get money from the state of Minnesota and set money, you as a council, as a mayor, get to decide that. You get to work with your local citizens. This should be coming from the citizens of the community. If it's the City of Browns Valley, or City of Fergus, or Wheaton, this should be driven locally and not from the state. So that failed, and that is actually a good thing because it would put a lot of strings on, on money that you would get for bonding. Let's talk about Lake Alice project. As you're all very familiar, it's not just a water quality, it's also habitat. The city, I know, I believe you guys have spent about, if my figures are correct, around $1.5 million on this project. One of the things last summer from Lassard Sam Outdoor Heritage, you were awarded a half a million dollars. That money comes from legacy. Legacy is, where that money comes from, 3/8% of every sales tax dollar spent in Minnesota goes into the legacy pot, and that's split into four categories. 33% of that money goes to Lassard Sam for habitat, just like what you're doing. Now, just, I know there's more work to be done, and you're, Joel Carlson is very good. He's a very good person to work with. That is good money spent because he, he's there for your interests. I mean that sincerely. But this fund, the Lake, Lassard Sam, ends in 2023. It became law in 2022 based on the voters. It was an amendment to the Constitution to take 3/8% of that, and 33% of it goes into that outdoor heritage, which is Lassard Sam. So that's something, if you guys are looking for the additional money outside of your area, that is there to improve water quality and other things. So I just want to, nine years will be around the corner very quick, and there's talk that they'll bring that back up to the voters for amendment, but that doesn't mean that it will pass. So just keep that in mind. And of course, if there, there, I serve as the lead on the legacy right now, and that was something that allows me to help the communities in this area. Two other things that we were able to do this year is Pelican Rapids had a VFW wall to be moved. We were able to use some money from legacy to do that, and then there's a township that had a Veterans Memorial Clitheroe. I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, that we were able to help that VFW, too. Let's talk about landfill. I know, of course, you guys all know that you've expanded. What I'm going to be working on this year with Mr. Carlson is there is a lot of restrictions that put by MPCA for that state of the art with all the, the, what word am I looking for? The, it's escaping me, but the barrier, we'll say the barrier, something like that. That's not the word I was looking for.
Liner.
What's that?
Liner.
Thank you. That word was not coming. Just had a blank, a blank moment for a second. But at the end of the day, you guys know better than I do what the state MPCA has done to you all, okay? They put these restrictions, and at the end of the day, it's raising land costs, and as a representative, not just for Fergus Falls, what's going to start to happen, because we know that you guys get garbage, we'll say, from other areas, people are going to start to deposit this illegally in other locations, and that is definitely not what we want. And so I will be, I have worked with MPCA on other issues. This is not an issue that I have worked on a lot. This is something I'm moving up, moving more to because we're seeing the costs going up, and at the end of the day, you guys have done a great job, but it's, we don't need to be micromanaged from MPCA. And if MPCA has given you requirements, the state needs to come up and say, hey, we're going to help lower the cost so other communities can use it, and we're not going to dump things illegally. And then the last thing I'm going to talk about is EMS, which is extremely important to me. Some of you may or may not know, I have volunteered as an EMT for 29 years for the City of Browns Valley, and we know that we have a crisis in EMS with retention, recruitment, and reimbursements. Good news, we took a step forward. We were able to get $30 million from the state, and that was actually led by the Republicans in greater Minnesota who led that charge. We started at 120, and we got 30 million. How that affects Fergus is, of course, Ring Doll. Ring Doll received around $313,000 from the fund. Now, this money doesn't go out just there. Everybody has to apply for it, okay? City of Browns Valley received $47,000. Ashby received, I think, $129,000, $126,000. But if a city does not, if a service does not apply for it, they don't get it. This was a greater Minnesota, none of the hospital systems, Mail North, in the metro area, received this, okay? Ring Doll, we were able to keep a private organization, they're one of the very few in the state of Minnesota, to get that, and so forth. So they were, and those are average figures. It could go up. It shouldn't go down. The reason it could go up is maybe a community does not apply that application. This money is supposed to be received sometime in December for the community. Also, what we were able to do, especially in gray, in smaller services like City of Browns Valley, Wheaton, Henning, because we all go to other parts of the state, none of us stay in Fergus Falls, we also were able to give some flexibility to how they can provide care. Since I've been down at the Capitol in 2015, I have always thought it was a good idea that if you have a PA, especially a nurse with some training, why could they not run in the back of the rig if we were short an EMT or paramedic? Because they provide those same skills. Different setting in ER instead of the back of the ambulance. So we were able to, beginning August 1st, a service has to get a variance, but a nurse now can run in the back of the ambulance, which makes sense. Nurse practitioner can also. And then we gave flexibility to drivers, especially when you get into the smaller services, it needs some flexibility. So that driver still has to have a CPR card, still has to go through the emergency training for doing it. It just gives some flexibility. Also, what we saw during COVID, we saw a lot of, we saw nearly 40% of EMTs and paramedics not renew their license. So what we did was for 18 months now, if those individuals, right now, you can wait for, if, for example, let's say I decide not to renew my license next year, I have four years to become an EMT again and recertify. We extended that 18 months for 10 years for people who want to be an EMT or paramedic. They still have to go for refresher class. So for example, let's say during, with Ring Doll, let's say five years ago, we had paramedic A, B, A, and B, and C decided not to renew their license. But with this, they have 18 months now. If they did not renew their license, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years, they can renew it. Flexibility, we don't know why. We did not do any research why we saw such a high, I have my, my hunch why, but why so many people dropped out as an EMT or paramedic. So it's some flexibility that we gave services and so forth, and then we also gave flexibility for some EMRs also. So that is my summary. You don't want to listen for me for another two hours. I could go really long. So I'm happy to take any questions on these subjects or maybe something else, but that, that is my summary for tonight.
Thank you, Representative Backer. I just want to say thank you for representing us in St. Paul for the partnership, and we look forward to continued work together on behalf of the city. Does anyone have any questions for Representative Backer? Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight as well.
Yeah, you're welcome. And if, my cell phone number is published out there. I do have a lot of constituents who use it and text me. Feel free. One of the greatest joy I have as your state representative, like my friend from New Jersey would say, is bust the chops of the bureaucrats. I love doing that, and we're very successful at doing it. Now, we physically don't become rocky and bust their chops, but I just have a persistency that I've learned from others. So, and we've done it for you in the past for the City of Fergus behind the scenes, and enjoy doing it. So thank you for your service. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Representative. Moving along to the consent agenda tonight, we have five items that are on the board. They're in our packets. If anyone would like any of them removed to discuss individually, we can do that at this time. See, none I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented.
I'll have that, Your Honor.
Tom, thank you. Scott, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we'll welcome Doug Green. He's going to talk about authorization of the issuance of the 2024 bonds, A bonds. Good evening, Doug. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's always great to be here, and it's great to see that water coming up from splash pads on a hot, muggy night. The resolution in front of you is what we call an authorizing resolution or a set sale resolution. I believe you did have a conversation last week on this bond sale, but so this, some of this might be a repeat. What this resolution does is it authorizes us to, Baker Tilly, to take bids on behalf of the city. It sets the date and time of sale for July 15th at 10:30. It approves the terms of the proposal. The terms of proposal goes into the details of the bond issuance. It's really the instructions for the potential bidders. Gives them the bidding instructions, and then it authorizes city staff and Baker Tilly to execute and deliver an official statement, which we're just about completed with. Do you know, this is primarily, this financing is primarily for the two sales tax projects, DeLagoon Park and the Aquatic Center, as I mentioned, the splash pad. But that's, but we're combining it to be efficient and save some financing costs with the smaller improvement, the street improvement project. So it is a much larger bond sale than we're accustomed to, just because of those two large projects. The total par amount going out for bid is $60,870, and obviously, the sales tax projects are about $16 million of that. So we expect the larger the bond issue, the more marketable it is, we'll get more people, more folks' attention, and so that, you know, that will be good to see. We're looking at around, right now with current interest rates, around 1.6 million. We did have a pretty good week last week in the market where the interest rates came down about a quarter percent. Don't know what's going to happen over the, you know, over the next month, but hopefully we'll see some further declines a little bit in interest rates prior to the sale. With the sales, with the improvement, street improvement projects, again, rather small. So in the end, after assessments, we're looking at annual levy around a, between $80,000, $85,000. So, yeah, and again, any change in interest rates is not going to change this, these amounts too much. So you can expect the final levy to be in this, in this ballpark. Next slide. The, this is just one of the many indices out there that is, shows where interest rates are in the tax-exempt municipal market. This is the AAA rated where the 10-year yield is. So we're for the, that's, that's a good benchmark. The improvement bonds go out 15 years. The sales tax projects are repaid over 12, 13 years, but the 10-year is a good indication of where interest rates are. This goes back to 2016 there, and you can see that since, you know, we got out of COVID, and over the last 10 years, it's really bounced around between 2% and at the height, you know, about almost 3.6%. So again, hopefully, we'll just stay where we are. I think we'll be happy with, and we'll be able, the sales tax will certainly be able to support this debt service. So, next slide. Going forward, authorizing the sale tonight. We have a credit rating call on Thursday. Expected with, you just had, you'll have, we just had your 2023 audit presented, you know, good, great results there. So I expect everything to go very well. We'll have the bond sale on the 15th in the morning, and we'll bring it to your attention that evening. And then we will close on August 1st and get the money in the bank, and hopefully the rain holds off so you can do some construction projects, which has been a problem throughout the state, as you can imagine. Projects are certainly behind, but for that reason.
Thank you, Doug. With that, I would look for a resolution authorizing the issuance of those 2024 A bonds.
I'll make.
Thanks, Scott. Second, Anthony. Questions for Doug or for Bill?
Well, we talked about it Wednesday.
Roll, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Thank you, Doug. Next item is consideration of a second reading of ordinance 58, eighth series regarding cannabis zoning. Just to give a little background where we're at, Cannabis Committee has considered this since January, I believe. It came to the council during a work session. There was a resolution offered in May. It had its first reading two weeks ago. Public had its opportunity to speak. Since then, Chief of Police came to the committee of the whole, presented a second option that he presented as a compromise, but it was a second option. And so we have had a first reading with the original ordinance, which would allow the sale of cannabis in a B6 zone. The compromise would allow sale of cannabis in a B3 zone with conditional use. So that's to set the stage of where we're at. I guess it's up to the council. We're going to, I told the public, they would have the opportunity to speak to this issue, and then it'll be back to the council to see if there's, if they would like to move and make any changes to the ordinance that's had its first reading, and then we will vote on that ordinance, however it stands at that point. Is that fair with everybody?
Yeah, just to clarify, I think the police chief, it wasn't conditional use, it was
interim use.
interim or some, yeah.
Yeah. So I think we went back and forth between conditional interim, but Claire, I don't know if you want to differentiate the two, but.
Yeah. Well, I can talk a little bit about that.
Thank you.
I mean, your conditional use is where you would get.
The conditional use is where you would get to utilize the property with certain conditions. It's a right that attaches to the property, and you can sell it, and that right continues. And so usually what happens with a conditional use permit, it goes before the planning commission, and the planning commission comes up and sets reasonable conditions and makes a recommendation to the council to either, well, in most cases, to grant the, the use subject to the following reasonable conditions, and then the council basically makes a decision as to whether it wishes to do that. The difference between a conditional use and what the chief has suggested was an interim use. An interim use is a use that is temporary. It sunsets after a period of time, and under our ordinance, we can issue interim use permits, but only for a period of five years. And it is not a property right. It doesn't go with the property. It goes with the use and goes with the individual that holds the use. goes with the use and goes with the individual that holds the use. So there's a big difference between the two. One, basically, under a conditional use permit, it's it basically is the equivalent of a property right, and it can be conveyed, and it can't really be taken away unless the conditions are violated into the future. But there's a process for that as well. As opposed to an interim use permit, yes, that can always be taken away too, but it doesn't attach to the property. It doesn't continue on. You can't you sell the property, the conditional use doesn't or the interim use doesn't come along with it. So is there any questions about that on the council? And the differences between the two?
Thank you, Anthony Fabrino, and thank you all for clarifying, because, yeah, I was inquiring. It was an interim use that the chief of police brought forward last Wednesday as part of the.
Yeah, and it was. And the version in front of you, I believe, has conditional use permit, and that's because our code, as it is written today, does not allow interim use permits in commercial zones. It's only in industrial zones. So if you're going to approve it with an interim use permit rather than a conditional use permit, we have to make additional code alterations to accomplish that. The other thing we talked about is that you can review a conditional use permit in a period of whatever number of years that that would be put on as a condition, which accomplishes the same thing as an interim use permit, in essence. So we figured if that was the idea, is reviewing this on a periodic basis, we can accomplish that through the conditional use permit, but also avoid future code changes as well to allow interim use permits in commercial zones rather than just in industrial zones. So just to simplify things.
Everyone clear with with that we're ready?
One thing, I just will, if we vote on it, we have to vote on changing it, the first reading, or we have to just vote on the first reading and.
Yeah, my suggestion is you should vote on the first reading, because that's what's been presented, and that's with the conditional use permit, and either you vote it up or down.
Well, actually, we have a first reading.
Oh, yeah.
First reading would be the B6. That's what's been presented.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
And then if that gets defeated, then you can go on, and we can change that.
My suggestion was then just pass a motion directing me how you'd like it to change, and then we'll come back. And most likely, it'll probably be a first reading again, because it'll it's making more changes to the to the code.
Thank you.
Okay.
So basically, we're going to vote on a B6, and technically, if we voted down, then it it would then go, it would, we would then instruct you to rewrite the ordinance as the B3 as a conditional use.
Or other or anything else you wanted changes in there. I think there's other compromises potentially to be considered as well, but let's 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 follow the process through Yeah, Scott?
Again, to clarify, it's not only B6, but it would also include the industrial zones, all three, I, one, and two, and three. It's not only B6.
B6 and above.
B6 and above.
B6 and above, which includes industrial zones and so. So with that, that's what we'll do. But before that, we said the public had their opportunity to speak, so we're going to honor that. And please step to the lecture and identify yourself if you'd like at this time.
Hi, I'm Emily McKeon. I'm a Fergus Falls resident. I own Sugar High Cannabis Consulting and Dispensary. I just have a couple of things to add to what I shared last week, based on some press and statements that I've read in the last two weeks. And these are in no particular order. I'm just I'm tired, and I'm confused, and I'm frustrated. In the same way that Scott Rachel's concern previously that I brought up about cluttering up downtown being not a valid arguing point, neither is Mr. Kwame's statements that I've read in the in the press regarding, well, here's a quote, "We didn't ask for this in our community, but we've had to deal with it." That's not a valid arguing point in any of this. That's a thought, and that's an opinion, and that's fair, and that's okay. That's not an arguing point in this. Same goes for the assertion from Kyle Bergeren, well, the assertion, the statement that he received negative feedback regarding our 420 Fest that a fellow business, downtown business retailer and I organized. That has nothing to do with this conversation. I'm so tired of this. This has no place in this. That was a successful, positive event in our community that benefited the entire community, and we followed all laws locally and state. Your opinion on that has no bearing in this conversation that is affecting mine and another valuable business downtown. Okay, that's just ridiculous. If we're talking about opinions, it's it's as ridiculous as me to get up here and say, well, my opinion is that having alcohol downtown and the city of Fergus Falls profiting off of alcoholism and addiction shouldn't be allowed. You don't get to pigeonhole cannabis and set it aside from tobacco and alcohol. If you do, you are using your opinion on that substance. And furthermore, and this is the last real thing I want to say, it was brought to my attention today by a constituent in Ward 4, an email conversation that he had with Mr. Rachels that very, very much illustrated the lack of understanding and basic baseline comprehension of cannabis. Mr. Rachels, you said that you think there should be no THC in liquor stores, hemp only. I've said this here before, I'm going to say it again. Cannabis is cannabis. Under that umbrella are either hemp or marijuana. They're the same plant botanically. The discerning difference between the two is the percentage of that flower that is comprised of delta nine THC. Okay? Hemp and marijuana are the same botanical plant. Okay? The THC in the beverages sold at the liquor store right now is hemp derived. It's the same THC that's going to be entering the marijuana market in edibles, beverages, and all other. Okay? And I don't really expect an answer, because I don't really know the etiquette of these things, but like, why haven't we gotten an answer as one example of what a public safety concern is? I can't tell, no, I nobody is answering these emails, that question. Can I can I have one example of a public safety concern? I mean, am I allowed to ask that right now? Like, what's one public safety concern for having cannabis retail downtown? Am I allowed to ask that and expect an answer, or do I just voice that I'm curious?
I think you can voice it. I don't expect that we're gonna.
Hey, well, it's very frustrating, you know, not from our chief of police, not from any city councilors, not from any city staff. I've asked it multiple times. I'm tired of not getting answers. This is ridiculous. Please make the right decision. For whatever it's worth, I'm okay with the proposed ordinance amendments with a conditional use or an interim permit, whatever, so long as you don't have to be uprooted, because that will destroy my business and end it. Also, a violation of state statute, which I brought up last weekend. No one's talking about it. I'm sorry to be up in arms. I'm just.
I will. Scott.
So long you are allowed to make reasonable adjustments regarding zoning, so long as it doesn't result in the business being inoperable and not being and and there's nowhere to move into.
They have a right to make zoning decisions relating to the licenses that are about to be issued. That's what they're doing.
So.
They make zoning decisions based upon the license to be issued. The state statute allows that.
There's a line item right after that that says, so long as the changes and and zoning amendments and ordinances imposed do not result in the cannabis industry or cannabis business being inoperable. That's the like paraphrase, but essentially the exact line item in the statute. If you boot us out and hose us out of downtown, I don't, I can't speak for the other cannabis dispensary, but we don't have the money to just build a new cannabis dispensary in a B6 or commercial or whatever the hell industrial zone. We don't have the money for that. There's no buildings to move into. What, Kmart? That's just it's it's just.
I would ask you to read the statute again.
I read it at this podium two weeks ago, verbatim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily.
Hey, guys. My name is Jacob Bitner. I'm just going to keep this really quick, kind of reiterate what I said a few weeks ago, that if we're aiming for economic growth in downtown Fergus Falls, we absolutely need to be prioritizing operation freely of operate free operation of businesses downtown regardless of whether or not you agree or disagree with the products they're selling. They are legal. And the other thought is, how much time have you guys spent on this? And how much more pressing issues do we have? I just want to make sure that we're not creating a problem that doesn't need to exist and wasting the time of our city officials going after something that, to be quite honest, I think we're spending a lot more time discussing than we need to. And I think there's more pressing things for us to be talking about than this. So I urge you guys to allow these businesses to operate freely downtown.
Thanks, Jacob.
I'm Mike Donahue. I'm a resident of Fergus Falls, lifelong resident of Fergus Falls. The proposed ordinance in a B6 zone, West Lincoln Avenue is a B6 zone. You're concerned about not allowing two established cannabis businesses very nicely situated in downtown Fergus Falls, but then having the cannabis businesses front and center as tourists and other people drive into Fergus Falls. It makes absolutely no sense why you wouldn't allow the the conditional use permits or interim use permits for established businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
My name is Chris Stock. I'm a lifelong resident of Fergus Falls, a registered nurse and the owner of Elevate. I've talked at this podium a couple of different times. I share the same frustration as Emily does, to see us being treated this way. It seems almost unfair. I've done a number of research studies into cannabis. I've done a number of looking over the data from other states, since there's 22 other states before us, that we can look at all this information and take away from it. I would just want to thank some of the council members that reached out to me beforehand, and that have come down in the past months to come and talk with me and just view their concerns. For those that haven't yet, I would still suggest reaching out to me and having the conversation, because you're only going to learn something, and we can only develop a rapport. I think that zoning us in a B6 zone is very frustrating. If we look at a map of the Fergus Falls zoning areas, there's six blue spaces on here, or four blue spaces on here that is B6, and one of them being the old Target building. I'm sorry, I'm upside down here. Being the old Target building, that leaves three spaces in the B6 zone, one of them being Walmart. And I don't know about you, but I don't have the money to buy a piece of land from Walmart. The other two are Fleet Farm and the Westridge Mall. I don't have money to buy the Westridge Mall either. And the other one is Kmart. And I don't know, doesn't seem like a real great retail option for small businesses. So what I would ask you to do is reconsider the CUP and allow us to be in the downtown area. The state has already put some restrictions on how close we can be to parks and stuff that children go to. So I think that would be fine for you guys to zone us properly down in the three areas. Others have spoke about some public safety concerns, with zero facts or statistics to go along with this. I, as a registered nurse, have studied public safety going through my nursing school program. And I would just like to reiterate again, some of the public safety aspects of this. Minor and adolescent rates dropped by 7% since the first state legalized in 2011. This was done by a study called Yarbers. It's a national study done by almost every state. So this is not just very few states. Another one I would like to cite is the DUI rate. It will increase by 2% to 4%, and that's what most states experience. However, when you mix it with liquor, it goes up upwards of 40%. So for you guys to sell it in your downtown liquor store and say public safety, it really makes me wonder what type of public safety concerns we have. I guess in closing, I would love to see us stay downtown, and, you know, me or Emily may not get a license to sell cannabis. However, if we do, we would like to stay in this community and watch it grow. And moving us out to the outskirts of town or in the industrial parks isn't going to help the rest of the small town businesses in downtown, unfortunately. And being a lifelong resident, I would love to keep raising my children here. Thank you.
Anyone else before we bring it back to the council? All right. So, council, questions of the process, questions where we're at. There's been a first reading. We've all discussed this at length. You ready for me to call for the vote?
I could make a few statements if I got.
Go ahead, Scott.
First of all, I think it's not appropriate to say that we would be closing or moving anybody. This isn't about closing or moving anybody. This is about what would be coming, which is the legalization of recreational marijuana. Wouldn't affect what's currently happening, and the businesses that currently exist could concurrently exist and continue doing what they're doing. So that needs to be clear. The existing businesses can exist as they are without any change, no matter what we do. Beyond that, again, this was something that the state brought to us. We didn't go looking for it. And we're trying to handle this the best we can. And we're not perfect, but we're doing our best. For example, no mo mai. There's things that sometimes we don't get right. But allow us the opportunity to meet the state mandate and do the best we can, and allow for the rules to change from the state, because they will, and get this settled so that we've got something on the books. We've got businesses that are going to be needing clarity as to what they can and can't apply for, and where it's going to go. And we need something on the books soon. We can't wait until January and then have it just be an open field with no with no ordinances on our books to cover this. But more than anything, for me, I think the future of Fergus Falls is young families and children. And my view is that this is not a family-friendly business, not a family-friendly product, doesn't serve to develop a family-friendly culture. It's an adult business, catering to adults, and it needs to be treated that way. And in my view, this is a fair compromise. Going with B6 and industrial zoning doesn't deny anybody access to anything. They can find it, and if they can't, then they're too stoned to find it. Well, they've got bigger problems. But it's going to be here. So my view again is that this is not a family-friendly business, and putting it in B6 is a fair resolution to this question, and it's a fair compromise. And to that end, we've got that motion or resolution now before us. And I would encourage the other council members to vote in favor of the resolution before us.
Thanks. Thanks, Scott. I just want to just, I just want to say one thing, because I think you know how much I respect you, Scott. I have to question, I don't think there's anyone that that any reasonable person who knows the market that is as it's changing expects the THC market to continue. The THC businesses will no longer be in business. So to say that we're allowing these two businesses to stay in existence, that I don't think that's a fair statement. If it's technically true, it's not actually what's going to happen with the market. If we change this to a B6 only, the two businesses that are downtown, which I think are contributing businesses to this community, which are operating legal businesses, selling legal products, will not be allowed to do that in their current locations. And I can speak personally, I can speak personally and say that when my wife and I started a business in this community, it was a business that manufactured a controlled sub substance. We made beer. It was it was controlled by the federal level, at the federal level, state level, there was local licensing. We would not have been able to start that business under the under the ordinance that the city is considering right now. That's where I come from it personally. I understand we all have different opinions about marijuana, whether it should be legal, whether it shouldn't be legal. That should not be our argument, because that ship has sailed. The state has allowed it. These are legal businesses. As a community, are we going to support the businesses that currently exist? Are we going to support the businesses that want to invest their money and their time in our community? And I think the message that we send is so important to the future of this community.
Okay, so I think we want to make sure we know what's on the table today, because I was asked prior to the committee of the whole meeting is to provide an amendment to the ordinance to allow for B3 zones. ordinance to allow for B3 zones, which would include downtown. So, I mean, that, that is what is in the council packet tonight as the second reading. So I think, because there is some confusion, I think what we need to do is, A, determine whether or not B6 is the limit, and either pass a vote, an ordinance up or down on that, or give instruction as to whether it's felt that it's B, includes B3. And we're sitting with conditional use permits, because that's what was discussed at the Committee of the Whole, my understanding was, because that's the amendment that I provided prior to the Committee of the Whole. And if it's including B3, then you vote that up or down. And if it's not conditional use permit, then I think you give instructions to the Cannabis Committee to look at interim use permits, or offer, offer a motion directing me to draft that this is allowed through an interim use permits, which is gonna require me to do additional work to allow for interim uses in business zones. So I think, is everyone clear, kind of, what we're talking about? If we're talking only about B6, then I think that is, that is what was presented at the first reading two weeks ago. But since then, it was my understanding that, that the Committee of the Whole, there was also this amendment with the conditional use permit that included the B, the B, the B3 zone downtown. And that's what's in the packet tonight.
Rolf, thank you. And let me just, I, I think there's a bit of a misunderstanding, because I think both resolutions are, or both ordinances are presented in the packet. I think the chief of police presented that, but no action was taken. So I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone that was there as it sits, we've had a first reading of the B6 and above, the original ordinance.
Yep.
Anything that would need to be changed, I think would need to be acted on by this council. Is that, is that where we all are at?
Yep.
So the one highlighted yellow is, is not, it's not valid.
Not, yeah, it's, it's just something that was presented as an option by the chief of police on Wednesday, but it has not been acted on.
Can I see that one?
Is that, is that, we all clear? Sorry, we all clear on that?
I just want to double check. I don't have it in front of me. That's B3. The one in highlighted in yellow is B3.
And this is B6, yeah.
Correct. So this is what was discussed
By the Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole. And I was the one that did the highlight to show that, that that's what's changed.
But we're not voting on that one.
Unless you want to.
Not, it's not, that has not been introduced.
Okay.
Right? That has not been, there has been no amendments that I'm aware of in us any ones. So right now, it's
B6 was the only thing that's been
B6. So do we take a vote on the B6? Is that, is that where we're at?
Do we vote up or down, and then move on?
Yeah. Offer that or whatever.
Well, it's already been, so we are voting on the, on the ordinance that was, had a first reading two weeks ago tonight, that would allow cannabis sales in B6 and above only. Everyone clear? Roll call.
No.
No.
Joe. Yes. Kwame.
Yes.
Rupert.
No.
Pramir.
Yes.
Regis.
Yes.
So that, that ordinance fails for lack of five votes. So, we, as I see it, we would look to the Cannabis Committee to consider the conditional use compromise, to bring that back. I think there's some other things. I think we could look at potentially as the ability to grandfather the existing, but whatever it's gonna take to get five votes for an ordinance, because I do believe we need an ordinance. If, if we don't have an ordinance, just so everyone knows, it goes everywhere. It could go in a residential neighborhood. So we need to come up with an ordinance, and we need to work as a council to find a compromise. So we'll bring it back to the Cannabis Committee. If anyone has any other things that they would like to consider as compromises on that, I would encourage them to bring that. And we will bring it back through the, through the ordinance process. Is that accurate, Rolf? We'll start it over, and we'll have a first reading of whatever we bring back. So the public will have plenty of time to weigh in on that. Tom? Everyone good with that?
Very good.
Thank you. We'll move on. Under presentation of claims tonight, we have bills in the amount of $3,263,576.61. If there's any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Second, Tom, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. There is no old, unfinished, or new business this evening. Anything you'd like to mention under announcements? Lynn? Okay, thank you. The council will be adjourning to a closed meeting to consider a real estate transaction as allowed by Minnesota's statute of 13D.05. We will not be reconvening. It's possible that we will be reconvening. We're not certain at this time. So, you're welcome to stay outside. If we do reconvene, we'll make sure to let everyone know. But with that, we're adjourned to a motion to suspend the RFP process
I will make that motion be tight.
for Fergus Falls Public Golf Course.
I'll make that motion, because I started the motion, so I'll make the motion to suspend it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Scott? Thank you. Jim? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries. And we would also look to bring the contract we discussed this evening to a
Letter of intent.
The letter of intent for the Fergus Falls Public, to the first meeting in July for a public discussion input.